Evening, we will open the Zoning Board of Appeals Public Hearing on this Wednesday, January 31st, 2018 at seven o'clock here at the Griffin Meeting Room, Harwich Town Hall. We will hold a public hearing on the cases that are, that will be read in a minute. Anyone of the public having an interest in these applications will be invited at the appropriate time to offer any comments. We'll start with having our members introduce themselves, please.
Jim Hilliard.
Kathleen Muller.
Dean Hederstedt.
Dave Ryer.
Dan Torek.
Mike Capoli.
And Shayla Delaney, Secretary.
Okay, before we hear the cases, we are at the moment without a clerk and Mr. Hilliard has kindly agreed to be placed in nomination for the position of clerk. So, I will nominate Mr. Hilliard to be the clerk replacing Mr. Burke.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Jim. Congratulations, and with that, we will let you open the, open the meeting with our first case. If you could read it in the correspondence, please.
This is a continued case from 12/27. Paul Cuddy, trustee of the Harwich Commons LLC, applied for a temporary change of use to allow for the continuation of storage, construction materials being used as part of the National Grid Pipeline. The application pursuant to code of the town of Harwich, Section 325, Table 1, Use Regulations as set forth in MGL, Chapter 48, Section 6. Properties located at Zero Hall's Path, MAP 86, parcel B7, in the Railroad Zoning District. I'm sorry, in the RRZ zoning district. We have some correspondence that I will read into the record from the Amy Oswhisky Conservation Administrator. This is in response to a request for comments from Conservation Department on ZBA Case 2017-38. While this department shares concern about if mining is occurring close to groundwater, unfortunately, the area is not within Conservation Commission jurisdiction. There are no known regulatable wetlands in or around this pit. It's not within the priority habitat for endangered species as determined by the Mass Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program. Is not in a FEMA flood zone. It is in a Zone 2 water recharge area and in the Six Ponds Conservation District, but this does not fall within Conservation jurisdiction. The next correspondence is from Link Hooper, Department of Public Works. The Department of Public Works has no input on this issue as it is private property, not within the town's ROW. Please contact me should you require any additional information. Thank you, Mr. Hooper. The third correspondence is from Megan Eldridge, Health Director. I review the application for special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals for the project at Zero's Hall's Path, consisting of the allowed continuation of storage of construction materials connected to the National Grid Pipeline project. The site is located in a water recharge area and protection of the groundwater is of the utmost importance to the Board of Health. With this in mind, it is my understanding from a letter from RH White attached that asphalt will not be milled or stored on-site. Only pieces of asphalt that are broken out throughout excavation will be mixed in with other aggregates such as sand, rock, clay, and gravel. The asphalt in the excavated materials will be screened out approximately every two months and sent off-site. The clean aggregate will then be used to backfill the trenches as part of the pipeline installation. Conditions I suggest making on the approval of this application include: no storage of hazardous materials on the property, no storage or milling of screened asphalt on-site, excavation material must be screened and all asphalt material removed at least every 60 days. Town Planner, Charlie Greenlaw, interim town planner, Greenhalgh. The planning board had no comments regarding this matter, however, as the town planner, I do have some recommendations. Surprise. A specific time period for this temporary use. There needs to be a reasonable end date. If the utility company needs additional time, come back to the Zoning Board of Appeal for a further review and approval. A specific area on the site for storage of materials should be designated and made clear to both the utility company and the property owner. Only materials related to the installation of the pipes and the uppers nces should be stored on the site. No other materials such as cut or reclaimed asphalt should be stored on the site. If the board should have additional questions or need additional information, please do not hesitate to contact me. There is a letter here from RH White. I'm assuming everyone has that. Proper assumption? Thank you. And then finally, Mr. Paul Cuddy, I'm sorry, from Paul Cuddy to Shayla Delaney. Happy New Year to you. The company leasing the land I own will send a letter soon with an explanation as to why the asphalt was just recently placed there. It was a temporary situation as it was going to be Robert Hour Company. In fact, I believe that may be scheduled for delivery soon. As I'm away, I had no knowledge of this temporary plan. Please let Ray see my email to you and any else, anyone else as a temporary explanation. Thank you, Paul Cuddy. Sent from my iPhone. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
What's the date of the RH White letter, Jim?
Mr. White is here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. The date of this, this letter is January the 12th. I'll be happy to read it if you.
Yeah, I don't think we have that, do we? Was that?
If not, I can make copies so that you have.
I'll read it.
Why don't you read it, then?
It's to Megan Eldridge, Health Director. Subject RH White Construction Materials Storage. Ms. Eldridge, per our discussion on January the 10th, I wanted to inform you of our intended use of the property located off Orleans Harwich Road in Harwich, Mass. RH White intends to use the rented property through October of 2019 for storage of construction materials associated with the National Grid Gas Main Installation. The construction materials to be stored on-site are excavated materials from performing the pipe installation, 12-inch steel pipe and associated uppers nces, storage containers for miscellaneous material, small tools and equipment, and backfilling material. Excavated materials will consist of typical aggregates such as sand, gravel, clay, rock, and asphalt. During pipe excavation, the majority of asphalt will be removed in a milling operation and brought to an alternative location. The pieces of asphalt that are broken out throughout excavation will be mixed in with other materials. Approximately every two months, the pile of excavated materials will be screened to separate out the rock and asphalt, which will be sent to an aggregate yard for repurposing. The remaining material will be used as the trench backfill materials. Should you have any additional questions, feel free to contact me directly. Sincerely, Tom White, Thomas White, Project Manager.
Okay, thank you. Could I ask the applicant to come up to the table, please, and identify yourself, sir?
Yes, I'm Tom White with RH White Construction. I'm the project manager for the job.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have one procedural issue. Normally, we have five members of the board voting on an application. This is a continuation of your case from last month. And last month, voting on the case were Mr. Hederstedt, Ms. Muller, Mr. Donahue, Ms. Mayhew, and Mr. Capoli. I was at that meeting, so I can vote on this case, but you were not, and you were not either. So, we will have one, two, three, four members on this voting on the case.
Mr. Chairman, I did not receive some of these letters in my packet, and so I think I need to recuse myself.
No, because they were just read into the record, and you heard them read.
Okay.
So, that will, yeah, because I didn't receive some of them either. I'm sorry. So, Mr. White, what we normally do in this situation is give the applicant the choice of going forward with four members voting, or you can come back next month when we'll have five people. Your choice.
I have no issue with four people.
Okay, so we'll go forward. We'll have Ms. Muller, Mr. Hederstedt, me, and Mr. Capoli voting on the matter. Yes, sir, please present your case.
So, we entered into an agreement with Paul Cuddy to use his property for storage of the construction materials, as I have laid out. As you can imagine, finding large storage areas on this area of Cape is rather difficult for the amount of work that we have to do. We're installing just shy of 70 miles of gas main throughout several towns, the majority of it being in Harwich. As we presented the letter to Mr. Cuddy, we stated that we would be storing construction materials, aggregates, pipe, and the other materials listed below, and the word asphalt was not broken out separate from aggregates, but aggregates being asphalt, we did not break that out. The large piles of asphalt that were in the pit were from a milling operation from paving that we had done, which was just the top layer of asphalt that was put there temporarily and was removed. It is not our intent to store mass piles of just straight asphalt in that pit. However, what we are looking to do is we have roughly 40,000 feet worth of 12-inch steel pipe that we need to store there with the other fittings and miscellaneous pieces that go with that, as well as the backfilling material. The only asphalt that would be in that is, as you're excavating the trench, some large pieces fall off from the side just due to eroding conditions, and they're mixed into the backfill material that is then transported to the site. It is screened out so that we don't put that material back in the trench and sent to Robert Hour for repurposing. So, we would keep it there. We have to accumulate enough material that it makes sense to screen it to get that asphalt off of the site. We have not brought any new material to the site since the last meeting. I know we were allowed to continue with our existing use of how we're using, however, we did remove all of the material that was there, just to show of good faith that we weren't adding anything additional that made people uncomfortable. There is nothing being stored that, stored on-site that is outside of normal construction operating procedures. So, we were asking to continue with the use of the property, not storing straight millings on-site, but just the large chunks of asphalt that are mixed in with the backfill material.
Okay, thank you. Anything further?
Unless somebody has questions for me for Mr. Hilliard.
I have no questions.
Ms. Muller?
No questions.
Mr. Hederstedt?
I don't have any questions, except that if we were to go ahead and approve this, it would be my request that we take whatever letter he has sent us, and we incorporate that as part of the authorization, along with, you know, if we remove by the, I think he gave us two, two dates before, it would be, the entire project would be done by two specific dates, I believe?
We would be done by October 2019.
Right, okay, so that should be added in. But other than that, I have no problem.
Actually, we probably need to do two special permits, one for AGI, which is out there also.
So, and I'm not just, I just want to be clear, I'm not representing them.
No, you represent White, I understand.
Correct, and they're actually no longer there either.
Okay, but last meeting, the representative of Paul Cuddy came and requested special permit for them, so I think we should do that and put a 2/2018 time limit on. They're already gone, but that was when they were to finish. And then a special permit for White to 10/119, 2019, in addition to the conditions. Remember the realtor came last time?
Whose land is it?
Paul Cuddy's.
It's Paul Cuddy's.
Well, it's Cuddy's special permit, right?
Right.
So, we have to give him that. That's the first thing.
Well, maybe we can, maybe we should do it one, right. He was the applicant, now that I look back at it.
Right, he's the applicant, so.
You're right, he was the applicant.
So, it should be a special permit to him with the terms and conditions that are in his, in this gentleman's document, and including when everything will be done and removed. So, that's the only comment I have, and I don't want to repeat all of that, because it's great to what he said.
Right, and his letter pretty much tracked the, was it the Conservation Commission letter? Amy Oswhisky?
Was it hers?
No, it was the health.
Was it Charlotte Greenhalgh, Assistant Town Administrator?
No, it was.
Wait, it was who?
The health director was referring to that letter throughout her comments.
And who is that now?
Megan Eldridge.
Okay.
It tracks, they're every, I think it tracks all the comments we received from all of the town departments.
It sounded like it, yeah.
Yeah, in its sense lit, they're not going to store that stuff permanently, and what they're doing with asphalt is they are grinding it up and putting it along with the aggregate, and they're going to filter it and get it out of there every, whatever the, his little memo said. And that's, I think that fits the situation perfectly. But that's my comment.
Mr. Torek?
No comment.
Mr. Capoli?
I agree with what Mr. Hederstedt said.
Okay, anyone in the public like to speak to this application? No, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
The hearing closed, I'll entertain a motion in the case.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. The board hereby grants Paul Cuddy, trustee of the Harwich Commons LLC, a temporary change of use, a special permit to allow for the continuation of storage of construction materials being used as part of the National Grid Pipeline pursuant to the, this is granted in pursuant to the town of Harwich, Section 325, Table 1, Use Regulations, MGL, Chapter 40A, paragraph, or Section 6. Property is located at Zero Hall's Path, MAP 86, partial 87, in the RR.
B7.
B7. I guess at the, at the RR zoning district, and in accordance with the gentleman's presentation memo to us this evening, and that the, that those actions will be done in accordance with that document, and that the entire, the entire special permit will terminate, and all materials are to be moved by?
10/119.
10/119.
Okay, with just the clarification that what's in the letter are actually conditions to the special permit.
Exactly, that's what I was, that's what I said.
Okay.
That's what I tried to get across, and I'm sorry.
Do we have a second?
One second.
All in, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Special permit granted, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
It's all the construction on 39 and Queen Anne?
You got his memo.
And Great Western Depot, it's all National Grid?
Yes.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I consider it a trifecta on a day when I could ignore three.
Okay, do we have anything to stamp?
We want to stamp this.
We want to, yeah, we want to stamp the letter.
The conditions from.
You know what, I'm going to stamp the whole package. Put that all into the case file.
Do we put all the rest of the memos in there too? Out of the file?
All right, Mr. Clerk, if you read our next case, please.
Case number 2017-39. Andrew M. Wang, trustee of LSW CAPE Realty Trust, through his attorney, William Crowell, has applied for special permit or in the alternative of variance to expand pre-existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling by constructing a deck addition. The application is pursuant to the code of town of Harwich, Section 325, Table 2, Area Regulations, and Table 3, Height and Bulk Regulations, as set forth in Mass General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 6 and 10. The property is located at Five Flake Yard Road, MAP 7, parcel A43, in the RH1 zoning district. We have correspondence. Barbara Meyer, who, I'll read the correspondence, don't, she, oh, she lives at Five Flake Yard Road. I'm in receipt of your letter informing us that the property owners, I'm sorry, property owners at Five Flake Yard Road are applying for permit with the zoning board. My brothers and I own the property at 11 Quason Lane, which abuts Five Flake Yard immediately to the west. We have been the architect, we've seen the architectural plans with the proposed chances, changes to Five Flake Yard, and are writing to support the changes being proposed by Mr. and Mrs. Wang to their property. We believe that the changes will enhance the property and are reflective of the neighborhood. Thank you for considering the homeowner's request for a permit or variance to complete the proposed renovation. Sincerely, Barbara W. Meyer. I need to ask, if I may, Mr. Chairman, who will be doing the construction? Ms. Ellis? I have to recuse myself for potential conflict.
Okay.
Okay?
Any further correspondence, Ms. Secretary? No? Okay, we will have a voting. Attorney Crowell, Ms. Muller, Mr. Hederstedt, me, Mr. Torek, and Mr. Capoli, since Mr. Hilliard has recused himself. And if you could identify yourself for the record, please, and the gentleman with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney William Crowell from Harwich Port. I have seated with me Harry Ellis, Harry Ellis Construction, and Kevin Daphne, the architect from Sandbox Design, who designed the building and elevation plan. First of all, thank you all for coming out tonight. Middle of January, snow, cold, virtually only one hearing. It's important to my client and to us because of a time, of timing. If we lost a month, we wouldn't be done in time for the summer, perhaps, and there's a lot of things going on at that house, so thank you all for coming out. Parenthetically, to Mr. Burke, I enjoyed his time on the board. I thought he was very helpful to the whole process, and was always a challenge as a fellow attorney to see if I could satisfy his requirements, as well as all of yours. So, in any event, the property is located off of Air Lane, Secwatin Lane, Quason Lane. It's at Five Flake Yard Road, south of Route 28, bordering on Nantucket Sound. First question is whether you folks know what a flake yard is?
Yes, and I wanted to ask you, was there really a flake yard there?
And I'll tell you, I'll tell you. Glad, you win the prize, but.
Well, now.
In the old days, in the old days, in the 1800s, at the end of C Street in Harwich Port, was, there was a long pier and three masted schooners that traveled all around the world, fishing and so forth. My great-grandfather was a cabin boy on one of them, went to Australia and back from, from Harwich Port. But in any event, there's two ways to preserve fish, codfish. One is salt back then, and the other is dry it in the sun. And so, if you clean a fish off the, off the bone, you flake the fish. And this area of town was flat and very sunny, and I've seen pictures, there's racks and rack, wooden racks of all this codfish laying out in the sun, drying to preserve the codfish. So, they didn't know there would be multimillion-dollar houses sometime where the fish were drying, but in any event, I.
No, I didn't know that.
Okay.
I thought we were talking about flaked buildings, which is.
That was what they did with Elmer Crowell's barn.
Right, and I thought, why would.
You flaked the building.
Why would they be flaking buildings down near the water? That makes no sense.
You flaked the fish, and that's why it's called a flake yard. All right? So, I've just tried to challenge myself here and there that not just take names for granted anymore and wonder why, why, what is that? Where did that come from?
So, it's a great picture of Provincetown with the houses and flakes everywhere, and I'm thinking, what must that have smelled like? Wow. I mean, and of course, I don't know what they did when it rained, they'd have to get them all in, because they go bad.
Right, I mean, they didn't have, it wasn't like tobacco barns.
They didn't have the barns. It was all out in the open, yeah. Anyway, proceed.
So, is that the kind of cod that our grandmothers used to give us codfish cakes?
Yes, some codfish, cod liver oil pills.
Codfish, so that was made with flaked cod?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
To the best of my knowledge, I don't go back to the late 1800s, but I've read about it. All right, so we have a plot, a certified plot plan that shows the existing conditions and then the proposed conditions. And we have the building and elevation plans, and you can see, this is a, an addition basically to put on a porch. As we go through the dimensional aspects of the filing, the setback from Flake Yard Road on the north is presently 23, 23.3 feet, and it will be reduced to 17.2 on the northeast corner of the proposed porch.
No, I don't think, I don't think that's correct. Isn't it 25.1 going down to 17.2?
It is on that corner, but what I'm trying to say, what I'm, the point is that at 23.3 to the left of, to the left of that?
Right.
That makes it non-conforming.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
But you're supposed to be 20 feet, 25 feet.
I see what you're saying, okay.
Gotcha. So, I'm pointing that out, and we're going from the closest point presently, 23.3, and going to 17.2, which will be the closest point of the new porch.
Gotcha, sorry.
So, it's a Gale case on that northerly side. From Secwatin Lane, it's presently 31.1, and it's going to remain 31.1. So, it's already conforming, we're not coming any closer. The southerly side or rear setback, depending on which road you're talking about, is currently on the existing conditions plan, it's currently, sorry, 9.7 in the middle of the southerly boundary on the existing conditions, is 9.7. If you go to the, sorry, I don't like it when other people do that, so I apologize. If you go to the proposed conditions plan, you'll see the closest point is now 6.7. So, we'd be going from 9.7 to 6.7, two feet closer on the southerly side. The westerly side or rear setback is currently .7 and will remain that. However, if you look at the existing house on the existing conditions plan over there on that side, on that westerly side, we're taking out a chunk of that house as well as the porch and the block patio. That's not coming back. That's being removed. And you look at the proposed conditions plan, and you see that we labeled that Remove Buildings section. That's all going. As far as building coverage, you see the grid at the top of the, of the plans. The existing building coverage is presently non-conforming on the existing conditions plan at 30.7. It's a 30% max, and then we would be increasing that, again, a Gale case to 38.2 percent. The existing site coverage is 43.8, and we'd be increasing that slightly to 45.7. So, both of those are pre-existing non-conforming, and we would be intensifying those non-conformities as indicated on the grid. The building commissioner has correspondence indicating that relief from this board is necessary, and that's why we're here tonight. Mr. Chesley, dated December 19, 2017, says that we need relief from this board, so that's our denial letter, so-called. So, the petitioner, and I meant to mention that Andrew Wang was unable to attend, but is monitoring this closely. The petitioner, Mr. Wang, contends that this proposed project to add the porch and remove a section of the building is in conformity with the Gale case in that we're taking pre-existing non-conforming setbacks and building coverage and site coverage and intensifying those non-conformities to make them somewhat more non-conforming, which is, as you know, a special permit and not a variance. Sorry, his contention is that the intensification of those non-conformities would not constitute a substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood, and there would be no resulting substantial increase in noise, fumes, odors, congestion, traffic, or the like as a result of granting the special permit, and he would ask that you grant the special permit this evening accordingly. Thank you.
Mr. Hilliard?
I'm recused. I can't, I have no.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. Ms. Muller?
I looked at this carefully, and I went down and looked at it today, and of course, it's crawling with workmen. And I have to say, the things that you have asserted on behalf of Mr. Wang about the Gale case are true. case are true, but I find this a distasteful proposal. Here we have a 1987 house, almost 4,000 square feet. It already is non-conforming on three sides and really non-conforming on one side. We want to make it more non-conforming on two sides. This is not a little house in the campgrounds where somebody wants to straighten out a little dogleg. This is, this is just to make a grand house even grander. And I don't like it. And also, I'd like to know, what's the proposed pathway? I see only a walkway in the front and the driveway. What's the proposed pathway from the beach that people would take?
Wait, where, how would they get to the beach?
Mm-hmm. What's the necessity of the porch on the south side? We're talking about a porch on three sides.
If I can answer the aesthetics issue first, I understand your point. However, the board and the Gale case, it does, it does meet, as you said, the requirements of the Gale case. I think that the, and Kevin can, Kevin Dauphine, the architect, can weigh in on this also if he chooses, but I think the idea of the porch, when I talked to my client, was to give the house some character, to bring it down a little bit, because it's two full stories without any break in the action, and to give the folks that live there a place to sit out, look at the ocean. On the second level porch, be able to have a better view of the ocean. We don't have any butters objecting, notably, the one immediately to the south is not objecting, the one immediately to the west that is only .7 feet off the lot line. They're in favor of it, saying it's fitting with the neighborhood. I certainly respect your opinion, Ms. Muller, but I hope we can focus on the legal issues involved under the Gale case.
I am focusing on the legal issue, unfortunately.
Okay.
I don't want Howard to be Nantucket.
It seems to be happening, regardless of what we want, but that's just the way it is.
I don't think you need porch on three sides on this grand house.
Mr. Hedderstedt?
I haven't been by it, but I will ask, what's the external sightings going to be, and are they similar to what's around it, or is it going to be completely different from homes that are around it, from the sighting standpoint of view?
It'll, it'll be, now it's three-quarters white cedar shingles and clabwood on the front of the house. It'll all be shingled, it'll all just be white cedar shingles.
Say that again, it'll be clabboards where?
There is clabboard on the front now. That's, that's going to go away, and it's all just going to be shingled, all white cedar shingles.
Ah, shingles.
Yep, white cedar shingles, the same Cape Cod, small, trim-
Restained singles, singles?
Yes.
White?
Not white, gray.
Off-gray?
Yep.
Throughout the house?
The whole house, yep.
Okay, so you're trying to make it as Cape Cod as possible?
As Cape Cod as possible. And that's another thing with, if you look at how they're tearing the back off, if you, when you're driving up to the house on the side from Quasim, you'll notice it's just one great big wedge that's on there with all the skylights on it. Well, again, that, that all gets cut off and put, and put gables on there. So it's going to basically drop the whole look of the house down to make it, to make it look more like the house that are around it. As the porch is on the front, too, you'll, even though it looks like the footprint's growing, it's, it's going to drop the whole house. It's going to make it look like it fits into the neighborhood much better.
You are not going to have any sun-generating electricity things on the roof?
No.
No.
None of that? So you're going to try to make it as comparable to what's there as possible?
Right.
I appreciate that.
Just to downsize it.
It makes absolute sense, although you're making a huge home, I understand all that, and, you know, you're close to the ocean, you want people to look at and have sun sitting out on the deck and all of that. I understand all of that, but, you know, creating a home like that is two things. Make it so it doesn't, it's not a sore, it's a great sight to look at rather than a sore sight, and number two, stand by for maintenance. Thank you.
Thank you.
And you do recognize, we're not building a new home, the home's already there, we're putting a porch around it.
I know, but you're, but it's got, you've taken off, you've taken some of the stuff off. That's what I figured, you had to do something.
Yep, again, it's basically, you're going to think it's, you're going to think it's a smaller house on the property when you, when you see it. It's definitely going to look smaller.
Thank you.
Well, you can't see it anyway because of the big hedge across the front.
There is a large hedge.
They're going to get rid of a lot of hedge.
They're going to get rid of the hedge?
They're going to just cut them.
Don't tell me that.
It's a dangerous corner there, they're just going to take a little off the top. I just, I just want to point out the skylights that Mr. Ellis had mentioned earlier. So there's, there's 10 skylights on that westerly-facing side right now that have no order to them whatsoever. We're taking almost all of them out, we're leaving three skylights that are right in the middle of the roof, and they actually have some reason for being where they are. So we think that we're making-
That would make it look a lot better. That would be great. Thank you.
And having been there, I can, to Ms. Muller's aesthetic comment, I think anything that can be done to this house would be an improvement. I mean, it's, it's kind of an eyesore right now, frankly, it really is. And I think taking off the clabboards and putting shingles, if that's all you did, it would be a huge improvement. And I, from the looks of the proposed condition plot plan, it looks like you're actually reducing all the rear of the house, it would be on the west side there.
Yes.
Right. Because you're taking out the building section and actually part of that is house.
Correct.
Okay.
A chunk of the house.
Okay, that's the way I was looking at it.
Porch and a chunk of the house.
And I'm assuming the hash marks there, like you're taking out those two little bumps in the front?
That's correct.
Which really kind of uglify it, too. I think that would be a major improvement. And then there's a little, I don't know what the, I guess the step is coming out, and the-
Right.
-pre-existing deck is coming out, and we're going to have the new porch there.
That's correct.
Okay, I, I think it will be an improvement. The house is already there, I mean, the size of the house is the size of the house. They're basically reducing it on the back and putting some porches, but I think what they're going to try to do, if you look at it now, it really doesn't fit at all with the neighborhood. And I think when it's done, it's going to be a much, much better fit and much more pleasing. And the size is the size, I mean, there are a lot of monster houses down in that area.
The size is the size, but we're already-
And that's there.
We're, we're already have existing non-conformities, and we're making them, we're increasing them.
Every house in this area has a non-conformity. You know that. We're down in, I think this is technically the campgrounds, right? No?
Just outside of it.
Just outside?
Yeah, you gotta be careful with comments like that.
$2 million on the campground.
The same, the same problem, what's the, where's the lot size? They're all undersized lots.
What time do you get for the-
Yeah, it's, it's on 9,000.
The first of June or when?
Yeah, yeah, we are going to want to put the condition that no demo exterior construction or land, new landscaping between 6:30 and Labor Day, 2018 to 2019.
Okay, 6:30, okay.
6:30 and Labor Day.
Thus my comment at the beginning about, thank you for all for coming, so we didn't lose a month.
Right, right, but you know, that, that, maybe it's technically not the campground, but the same issue with traffic. I mean, it's very tight down there.
It's tight down.
Very tight, right. Mr. Torrick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, given the fact that I'm a newbie, this is my first case, and thank you, Jim, for sharing the Gale case, because I did read it, and the only criteria that I have to make any judgment is whether it meets the Gale case criteria, and in my view, it does, so I have nothing further to offer.
Mr. Kopole?
Yeah, I believe Mr. Kroll has made his, his case from the legal, legal side, so I have no other comments.
Okay, and I just, for Dan's benefit, there's, they not only, they're only enlarging pre-existing non-conformities, which is permitted under Gale.
Yes.
It's not permitted, it's creating new non-conformities. They're not doing that now, that would-
What was that?
If they made a new non-conformity, that would take it out of the scope of the Gale case, but they're not, they're not creating any new ones here, and that's why Attorney Kroll was careful and caught me up, that it was actually 23.3, so there was already non-conforming on that side. Had it been conforming, and they had wanted to go down to 17.2, that would have been a new non-conformity requiring a variance.
That's the Deidre case that modified-
Right.
The Gale case. We had, it was glorious for two or three years. But then Deidre came on, they modified their previous opinion, and, and the anomaly is that, he said, well, they've already got a, a non-conformity, how come they can intensify that? That's what the Gale case says.
Basically, that's what the statute says, really, so. Okay, anything further? Anyone in the audience? There is no one except you folks, so if you folks want to make any more comments-
They watch.
Yeah, well, I know they do.
A lot of folks watch this.
I know they do, because after the last hearing, there was a big Chronicle article, and there was nobody here from the Chronicle, so they look at the tape and then wrote their article, which is fine, makes eminently good sense to me. All right, I will take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. I will take a motion on the case, please.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Case number 2017-39, the board hereby grants Andrew M. Wang, trustees of the LSWCape Realty Trust, a special permit to expand pre-existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling, constructing a deck addition. The application is made pursuant to the Code of Manhattan, Howard, 325, 82 area regulation, 83, tight and bulk-
Sorry, sorry.
... regulations set forth in MGL 40A, Section 6. The property is located at Five Flake Yard Road, map 7 partial A43, in the RH1 zoning district with the following considerations. We are finding that there is no new non-conformity, and there will be no resulting detriment to the neighborhood, and that because of the property's location, there can be no major external construction during the period 630 through 1 September 2018 and/or 2019, nor can, nor can there be any significant landscaping during that same period.
Can I have a second to the motion, please? Second. Mr. Kopole, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Granted.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
You want this back?
No, thank you.
I can't give it away. I'll get it. Go ahead.
No, I didn't say I want it. No, I have some more to say. The motion-
Yes.
Based on those documents.
That right?
Yes, I have. Got the plans. Yeah, I didn't think about it either, sorry. It's okay. She'll take care of it, she always does. That's your job, that's your job. Cover our, cover our backsides quite well. Thank you.
Okay, I only stamp the new plan, not the existing conditions, right? We don't need to stamp that, do we? Existing conditions?
Spring, Texas.
Well, you know what? Let's put it in the record. Let's put it in the record. It's stamped.
And we have one grand.
Okay.
Sorry, I missed that, chief.
I didn't get it either.
Seven, six, one, and two.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Good luck, isn't it?
Okay, minutes, minutes from the December 27, 2017 meeting. Did anyone have any comments?
Nope, I sent my men, nope, no comments.
I will entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
I'll make that motion to accept those minutes.
Second.
Second. Ms. Muller, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain, I wasn't here.
And I-
One abstention, I was not here.
Well, it's okay. You can, you can-
You can accept them anyway.
We normally don't, yeah, you are, we normally don't show abstentions on those.
Yeah, you just, basically, I love sending them on, getting their feedback on cycles, things that you remember differently than I-
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Dave? I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
I just, for full disclosure, I just wanted to explain to the board what my potential conflict-
You don't have to.
I want to.
Yeah, okay.
Two days ago, I put a call into Harry Ellis's company to have him come out and take a look at a job, having one new kitchen done, and he's one of the several that I've asked to come in. I have not talked with him, he probably hasn't even gotten my call yet. But full disclosure, I was not going to sit on-
Yeah.
Good idea.
And in this day and age-
No, I wouldn't.
Good idea. That Deidre case should be in those materials I sent you by email a couple of months ago.
Okay, all right, I have it.
It's in there, the Deidre case, yeah. Any, any additional business from anyone?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes.
What if these people came back to us yet again and wanted to make the porch even larger in the front?
We'd have to look at it and decide whether it's a-
I guess, okay, on the front, that would be a new non-conformity, so it would be a variance.
Well, not necessarily.
It already exists as a non-conformity.
The front is-
You said back?
The setback, I think, on the front.
Yeah, it's, no, it's 23 feet. Setback is 23.
No, the other, the other side, the side where-
Oh, the other front.
The hedge side.
That's right.
So that would be a special permit. What if they wanted to make this porch even bigger? What would we say then? I'm concerned about, you know, I voted for it because I couldn't see a reason not to under the Gale case. I agree that it will be improved in appearance, but I'm troubled that we're inching, inching, inching 45 percent site coverage.
But the test under Gale is substantial detriment to the neighborhood.
That's why I voted for it.
It's not, oh, it did.
You know, and I-
It's not, no.
I said a few meetings ago, Attorney Kroll had said something, aesthetics would be in the purview of the zoning board, and I said, that's not true, because it could be such an aesthetic nightmare that it would be detrimental to the neighborhood.
Yes.
So he, he agreed with that, but normally aesthetics really is not a basis to deny a special permit if it falls within the purview of the Gale case. New non-conformity, different story, and we have been pretty tough requiring a variance for those.
Absolutely.
And as, then you guys, I haven't been here, but we're very stingy in granting variances to make up of this board.
I think I was also troubled by how far they've gone already. The house is covered in workmen and covered in plywood, and they knew this was, they're counting on this going through.
Everything they did, and I looked at it, probably didn't require any kind of permit.
Right.
Because they just, they took off, and now whether they did it or it was a wreck, I mean, it's an eyesore. I know, did you go down? I mean, it's horrible.
I just, I just did a Google Earth view, but-
It, it just looked like they were taking some stuff off.
It, it, the facades are very flat, and it looked as if it was built, oddly enough, kind of cheaply and for where it is.
Yeah, it's very unattractive to the neighborhood, and there are some fantastic houses down there. So, yeah, I think it'll look a lot better when they're done. Anything further? Thanks all for coming, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded by somebody, Mr. Kopole, all in favor?
Aye.
Any adjourn?